Good evening, Dick Sears, calling to meet order and welcome to our first virtual April 7th Town Board meeting. Remember, facts, not fear. You are not alone. I'm here this evening with Jeff Wilson, IT Director, and Lynn McKinney, Town Clerk. Everyone else is on the phone, so I'm not lonesome. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is the invocation. Heavenly Father, please watch over our first responders, our medical personnel, and all of our citizens during this battle against COVID-19. And let our thoughts and our actions be acceptable in your sight. Amen. Item number four, adjustment approval of the April 7th, 2020 meeting agenda, Mayor Pro-Tam.
Make a motion to adopt the April 7th, 2020 meeting agenda with no changes.
And again, roll call.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Pete Nelson.
This is Peter, second.
Christine Kelly. All favor, I'm sorry. All favor. Christine Kelly.
She's on mute.
On mute?
Sorry, I, yes.
All right, Sean McGrath. Dr. Aaron Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Item number four is the adjustment approval of the April 7th agenda. Item number five is a procedural motion. I think you all have the procedural motion before this. I need a motion to adopt the motion right there. It is. So I'll make that motion, please.
Motion to approve rules of procedure for electronic meetings.
All right, same thing.
Second.
Eren A.
I was sorry, motion made by Aaron Wolf.
Motion made by Aaron Wolf. The roll call, Dan Barry, Eren A.
Aye.
Pete Nelson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Aye.
Sean McGrath. And again, Dr. Aaron Wolf to three.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. And as we discussed before, in the comment, there was no one to sign up or send anything in. So we'll open and close the public comment section and go to agenda item number five, which is consent agenda. That's number seven, excuse me. Let's go to the five first. Number five. Number five, thanks. Okay. Item number seven is the consent agenda, excuse me. The motion by Mr. Mayor Pro-Tam.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just for one second, please, on the consent agenda, just for clarification, items six through 11 are all consent agenda items. So I would suggest a motion to approve all those unless the council wanted to take any by exception.
Okay. Someone wants to make a motion?
Motion to approve-
Make a motion to-
Approve consent agenda, item six to item 11, as in the packet.
Roll call.
Aye.
Pete Nelson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly again, please.
Aye.
Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Dr. Aaron Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Hang on a second. Agenda item 8A, new business, the Utley Creek Greenway, Holly Springs Engineering Project 14-021. I believe this is Aaron Levitt, engineering.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good to see everyone tonight. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you an update on the Utley Creek Greenway project and also request a budget amendment for that project. As far as requested actions. Can you get the slide to move forward, please?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. As far as requested actions, there's a budget amendment and it proposes to transfer approximately $1.3 million from Parks and Reserves for this project. As part of our CMAC grant, we will be reimbursed $580,000 in total. We've already received $60,000 for some design work that we've already done. And so that leaves a minimum of $520,000 left for reimbursement. I'll touch a little bit more on this in the later slides. At the end of the presentation, I will go over budget where there's a future opportunity for some additional funding through the CMAC grant. Can we get to the next slide, please? All right, so how is this plan supported? So the project is supported by the strategic priority area of engaged, healthy, and active community. It's goal number two, a plan design and build, maintain a comprehensive system of sustainable facilities, greenways, and park spaces. And so Utley Creek Greenway is further supported by the town's comprehensive transportation plan along with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Next slide, please. So here's a map of the project. I'm going to start with going over a map. We're then going to go into some background information and then we'll touch on the budget. But I'm going to be pausing at each slide to ask for questions. So just to orient you, the road running northwest to southeast is NC 55. We've got Avon Ferry kind of in the middle. The Village District is located at the top right. Our Rex Hospital, we've got the South Park on the bottom of the screen, and Morgan Park to the bottom left. And there's also the water reclamation facility to the left. Now, as far as what do these lines mean? We'll start out with the pale green, or it's almost white. Those are existing greenways, the solid line. And that's really the Morgan Park Greenway shown on the left side of the screen. The dotted white or pale green line is future greenways. The yellow solid line are existing sidewalks, and this show our sidewalk connectivity. The yellow dotted line shown on Avon Ferry Road is a future sidewalk that will be installed as part of the Avon Ferry Road Widening Project. This project is currently being advertised and we're looking to open bids the middle of the month. And then the thick green line is the Utley Creek Greenway project. So starting at the Morgan Park Greenway connection on the left of the screen, the Utley Creek Greenway will traverse some land. It crosses over Utley Creek. There's a 50-foot pedestrian bridge proposed. Then we go underneath NC 55 via an existing tunnel under the bypass. This project will add lighting to the tunnel and staff's currently investigating some security options like cameras. The greenway continues under NC 55. And there are two accesses at Chilmark Ridge in the Ballon Ridge neighborhood where people could enter the greenway. And also, it finally terminates at Ballentine Street where there are sidewalks that could lead you to the Village District or the Avon Acres Pool. Now, so that's pretty much the overview of the project scope. Were there any questions at this point?
Any questions or comments?
All right.
Again, C.
All right, next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit of background. So the town applied and was awarded a CMAC grant for $725,000. Now, the $725,000 is comprised of $580,000 from Federal Highway Administration. And then also, there's $145,000, which is the town's 20% match. Now, to get the congestion management and air quality, or CMAC grant, these grants favor projects that provide evidence of air quality improvement due to the decreased amount of vehicle trips caused by the project. And so back in December of 2017, council approved the design contract. And we had Weatherall Engineering perform the design. That design is nearing completion. The town did request and received approval to move forward with right-of-way acquisitions. So currently, our legal department is acquiring some property on a single tract that is needed for the construction of the project. Now, once that's completed, we can finalize the plans. And then we request construction authorization. And once received, we move forward with advertising and bidding the project. We then move forward and bring it back to Town Council to award it. And then we'd have to request concurrence of that awarded contract from the FHWA and NC DOT. At that point, we could then begin construction. Any questions at this point? And I'm going to go over the budget next.
Questions or comments? Looking good, Aaron.
All right, thank you. All right, so we've got a kind of simplified budget here. We start out with project costs and previously approved and previously funded, we had $255,500. And this was funded already. Today, we are asking for $1.3 million, and that includes land acquisition and construction. And that's based off an estimated construction amount. We have an estimate that was performed off the latest set of plans. So that's what that number is based off of. And this leaves us with a total of $1.57 million approximately, with money the town has laid out. And that's before we get into the grant funds. So the grant funding from CMAC will be received as reimbursements. And currently, we have a municipal agreement that's been executed and that guarantees us the $580,000. Like I said, these estimates, these are just estimates at this point. We haven't advertised the project. But once we do get an actual construction bid, we can approach fund the grant administration for some additional funding. So currently, we're anticipating about $387,000 in additional funds. And that's based off a 50% match of the amount we go over compared to the original grant. So that leaves us with a total anticipated grant reimbursement of about $967,000. Now, if you apply this to what the town has laid out, this leaves us paying about $602,000 for this greenway. Next slide, please. So just some additional information. As the project is constructed, reimbursements will replenish the Parks and Rec Reserve account. So this money's going to go right back into that account. Currently, we've been reimbursed $60,000. And that leaves us $520,000 remaining. So you may see those numbers in the actions and they're related to. It's not a typo. Once the construction bid is received, the town may request additional CMAC funds for applicable costs in excess of the original $725,000 grant. So typically, what we've seen is a 50-50 match on these excessive funds. But we've also seen lately that they've bumped their portion up to even as high as 80%. After the budget amendment, Parks and Rec Reserves will be about $2.3 million, the balance. And this will grow as the reimbursements are received. Currently, we're estimating construction to start in the fall of 2020 with completion early 2021. So with that, before I get to the motion, I'll just stop again for any questions.
Questions? Questions or comments? Seeing none, Aaron.
All right. Aaron, real quick, just a quick question. When do we expect the side of the greenway to be connected through the village there or through the neighborhood?
So you broke up a little bit at the beginning there, the side near the Village District you were asking about?
No, I'm actually talking about, is it Brayton Park there?
Let me pull up my map. So as part of the Brayton Park, is that, are you talking about part of the Utley Creek Greenway project?
That's affirmative, yeah. Just wondering when that portion will be ready to be connected, so there's actually access to the community there.
Well, which neighborhood is Brayton Park?
Morgan Park?
Morgan Park.
Yeah, sorry, I meant Morgan Park. My home computer died. I mean, where I had my agenda. Thanks, Kendra.
The Morgan Park Greenway is constructed. And that's complete.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Suggested motion. Someone want to take it?
Motion to approve the budget amendment to transfer a total of $1.314,520 of funds currently located in Parks and Rec Reserve's account 21 to project account 49-914.
Second.
What's been made in favor, say, Dan Berry first, let's go down to the roll call. Dan Berry. Pete Nelson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Aye.
Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Dr. Aaron Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And thank you, Aaron.
Mayor, one quick note. I'm using the Civic Plus software to go in parallel with the meeting. And that, this is new business number 12 versus number 8A. Linda, are you going to reconcile? Like, are you going to say both numbers or are we sticking to the 8A number instead?
I had intended to stick with the old numbering system, but I can change it in the minutes to match the new one. It doesn't-
I'm just letting you know they're not the same. So that's the only thing to remark on, because I'm using the software.
I have an 8A for me. But that can be fixed if you want.
When I printed it for the mayor, I didn't have access yet, so I assumed that we were going off the old number.
Okay, all right.
That's fine. I'm just making a note. That's all, just so you know.
Thank you. Agenda 8B, new business fiscal year 2020, 2021, strategic plan. That would be Randy Harrington, Town Manager.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mayor and council, what we have before you is consideration of your fiscal year 2020, 21 strategic plan. And as you've heard me discuss, the strategic plan really is that roadmap to help guide our organization forward. And there's really kind of three core components that result from it. One, it serves as a guide for your priorities for the town. Two, it serves as a guidance for future policy development for town initiatives. And then three, it's used as a tool to help allocate resources, particularly as it relates to the budget, which will be coming up here in the next one to two months. As you recall, the strategic plan was originally adopted by council in April of 2019. And at your February 2020 retreat here just a couple of months ago, you had an opportunity where you reviewed and considered changes and updates to your strategic plan. This plan was then further reviewed and fine-tuned at your March 10th workshop, which was just a few weeks ago. And so the request tonight is to adopt your strategic plan for the upcoming fiscal year 2020, 2021. And what I'd like to do is I won't go through all the initiatives, but I'd like just to highlight the core components of your strategic plan for the benefit of you and those who might be listening or watching. And one thing I will add is that for anybody who would like additional information about the strategic plan, certainly welcome you to visit our website, the town's website, and you can download the plan and look at it in more detail. So moving forward here, your strategic plan, the core components are built around a vision statement, which is Holly Springs offers an unmatched quality of life that reflects the joys of small-town living in a safe, family-friendly community that residents and businesses are proud to call home. There are then five strategic priority areas. And those include economic prosperity and diversity, being an engaged, healthy, and active community, organizational excellence, responsible and balanced growth, and then safe and friendly. And I'll touch on just a few of the highlights of the changes and the key goal statements for each one of these. Under economic prosperity and diversity, the outcome statement there is Holly Springs provides a climate where a wide variety of businesses thrive with economic opportunity for all. And there are three goal statements under this. One related to enhancing, attracting, and engaging diverse economic development opportunities. The second one around creating a vibrant downtown center. And then third, around seeking partnerships to drive economic development. Under the second strategic priority area is engaged, healthy, and active community. And the outcome statement here is that Holly Springs promotes fulfilling and rewarding lifestyles with abundant, healthy living options. And in this area, just like the economic prosperity and diversity, there were no recommended changes or proposed changes by council at this time on these two. But just to highlight here, there are three goal statements as well under this priority area. And the first one relates to improving, expanding, and seeking partnerships for recreational and cultural opportunities. The second, plan, design, build, and maintain a comprehensive system of sustainable facilities, greenways, which you just heard a little bit about a minute ago, and park spaces to high standards, providing attractive places that people use and enjoy. The third goal is to develop community events and programs that ensure a wide appeal of activities for residents. Moving on to the third strategic area is around organizational excellence. And in this one, there are four particular goal statements. But the outcome for this area is that Holly Springs is a leader in responsible government with a high-performing organization that meets the public service needs of its residents. And there's the first goal statement, as an employer of choice, we will retain and recruit a highly skilled workforce. And the second goal is leverage technology and innovative business practices to enhance customer service and improve business efficiencies. Under this one, there is a new addition of initiative 2.4, which is related to smart cities. And in this one, the initiative here is to inventory and market the town's smart city initiatives and pursue additional smart city initiatives that leverage data and technology to improve operational efficiencies and as well our information sharing with residents. So that is a new component that's part of your consideration tonight. The third and fourth goal statements, there were no changes there. The third one relating to expanding community engagement. And then the fourth around ensuring financial stewardship. Moving along to the fourth strategic priority area, this is responsible and balanced growth. And in this one, the outcome statement is that Holly Springs will continue to plan for future infrastructure and support a quality-balanced mix of land uses while preserving its small-town charm, characteristics, and history. The first goal statement is to plan, maintain, and invest in infrastructure, public infrastructure. And then in the second area, this one had some changes. But the goal statement is to support land use planning and policies that provide for sustainable and economic growth while balancing small-town characteristics. Two new initiatives here. One is focused on pursuing a residential-to-non-residential tax base ratio mix of 70% residential and 30% commercial. Initiative 2.2 is a new one, and it reads to update and align UDO regulations to the new future land use and community character plan. So those are some of the key changes under responsible and balanced growth. Sorry, I've got one more area on the next page here. And this is a new goal as well as some new initiatives that council developed. The goal statement reads, leverage town and regional partners to mitigate resident housing displacement from North Carolina DOT and town infrastructure projects. There are four initiatives. The first one is related to supporting the Wake County Department of Housing Affordability in community revitalization's efforts to increase housing options on county-owned property that is north of Ting Park. Initiative 5.2, pursue partnerships with nonprofit and private organizations to create affordable options. 5.3, identify and evaluate opportunities for flexibility in streamlining of permitting and development requirements to increase developer interest. And then the fourth initiative, conduct a housing study with a complementary citizens' affordable housing committee to analyze the town's housing composition, strengths, challenges, gaps, and potential courses of actions. So those were the key changes under responsible and balanced growth. Under safe and friendly, the, there were no no new additions in that particular area. But the highlight or the outcome statement in this area is Holly Springs is one of the safest communities in North Carolina with a welcoming spirit and an inviting atmosphere. There are four goals in this area. One is to maintain the town's high level of public safety. And obviously, being ranked the number one safest community in North Carolina, a very important component of that and one that we're really proud of. Number two, plan for adequate public infrastructure that promotes a safe community. Number three, enhance the capability to communicate public safety messages to the public. And then four, cultivate a creative and friendly atmosphere that is welcoming to all cultures and the diversity of our residents and visitors. So Mayor and council, that's a brief highlight of the key components of your strategic plan that you have before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions or invite the mayor and council to have some dialogue around these particular priorities.
Questions or comments? And if you have some, please introduce yourself as you speak. Good job, Randy.
Mayor, I have one question. It's Mayor Pro-Tam Berry here. Randy, on initiative 5.4 related to the housing study, I recall at the March 10th workshop, we took that up as to whether or not that item was going to be pulled into the plan. The mention of a citizen committee, was that also part of that motion to include? Or is that something additional?
That was, and I did have that as part of my notes and takeaways from the meeting, but I'll certainly test that with the full group. But that's what the takeaway that I had in my notes.
Aaron Wolf, I'm the one who made that motion, and that was, the citizen committee was included in there.
Okay. I think my preference, I mean, this isn't a debate on the action of these items, but I think my preference would be that we go through the housing study before we establish a committee and get those results. But I guess we'll take that up at a later time.
Yes. I think. Agreeable, sir, buddy?
Yeah, just a quick question, kind of on the same line of a question there from Dan from Sean McGrath here. As part of that discussion, I know we had talked about how we would go ahead and scope this. So I just want to make sure that that's still a part of this plan is this is not something that's going out there for action or RFP before we actually talk about the scoping of that housing study before we get there.
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember McGrath. And what we would do is staff would draft a framework of what that housing study could and might look like. And we would bring that back to council for input and any further guidance. And then in terms of moving forward, any action on that study would require a vote by the council to authorize an actual contract on that.
Also, the same comment I always make is this is the plan. I think it's a very good plan, although it's always subject to review, changes, updated. It's not in cement, but right now it looks good to me. Other comments or questions to the board? Seeing none? Send me the motion. Have a motion? Okay, there you go. Someone want to tackle the motion, please?
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 strategic plan outlining the town's vision, priority areas, goals, and initiatives that are designed to meet the current service needs of the community and prepare for the future.
Roll call. Dan Barry.
We need a second.
We need a second, don't we?
I'm sorry, second, please, yes.
Aaron Wolf, I second.
Thank you. Dan Barry.
Aye.
Pete Nelson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Aye.
Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Aaron Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And thank you, Randy.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just for once, I want to say a thank you to you and the council members for your hard work on the strategic plan. It is, I think you've put together a great roadmap for the organization and for our community and really appreciate your work. It is, I think you've put together a great roadmap for the organization and for our community, and really appreciate your work. Also want to thank the staff as well for their work in terms of helping to support this effort and look forward to implementing your priorities here in the next year.
Okay, thank you. The agenda, and I have unfinished news, this is the development plan and special exception use extension 17-DP-16-81 and 17 SEU-16, United Community Bank. I think Sean Ryan is going to talk about this, we're planning it.
Good evening, Sean. Yes, good evening, this is Sean Ryan with the Department of Planning and Zoning. This item on the agenda is a consideration of a request to extend the development plan and special exception use approval for United Community Bank, which expired in February of 2020. At the end of this presentation, we'll have a motion on the extension request. Just to give you a little bit of background on this project, Town Council approved the development plan and special exception use, including in a tree penalty for removal of some trees that occurred in 2017 back in June of 2018. In August of 2018, a minor amendment to that development plan to modify the floor area and the building elevations was approved, and that expired February 28th of 2020. In accordance with our unified development ordinance, we do allow for an extension of the development plan approval in six-month increments, not to exceed two years, if approved by the Town Council for good cause shown. The applicant has provided their reasoning for their requested extension, and that was included in the packet. This extension would go until August 28th, 2020. Just to refresh your memory of this project, it is located at the intersection of Main Street and ARP Street. So under the mouse here on the left-hand side of the image is Main Street, and the northern portion of the property is along ARP Street, it's a two-story structure, and you can see the proposed or the approved building elevation in the bottom corner. With that, there is a motion on the screen, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have some comments, questions or comments?
Yes, Aaron Wolf, I think our one question was regarding the timbering penalty that was applied. There was a confusion about whether there was a sunset in there and when that exactly was, and how, when that was compared to when this extension would expire.
Yes, so the fee was to be assessed at the time of construction drawing approval. So if this project does move forward into construction drawings, they would not be able to be granted a permit to start that construction until that fee was paid. And it's my understanding, and I'll defer to our town attorney, that there is a three-year sunset on that timbering permit violation.
So yeah, thanks, Sean, the you've already levied the fine, and it's tied to the special exception use. So if the use were to go forward, they would have to pay the fine. And if you keep extending it, as long as you keep extending it, that condition, that plan condition or special exception use condition exists, and it won't expire in three years. It would expire if the plan were to expire, and the special exception granting did expire, was extinguished or by operation of law. You didn't continue it, that would expire. And then any new plan that they came in after between June and September 2020 would, you know, would we put them on notice to start the three-year clock in September of 2017. They elected not to wait three years before coming in with a plan, they came in with a plan within those three years. So as a condition of plan approval, we levy the fine of $13,800, by recollection. Might have been $400, $13,400 as a penalty for the violation of the timbering ordinance. So as long as the plan stays alive, I think your ability to collect this is good and valid. If the plan were to expire or die, a new plan, we would not be able to enact that penalty after the three-year period.
There is a mail from Town Council, John Sefan, April 8th or April 3rd. I think everybody got, and I think it does outline exactly what John said, so I have this here, I think you all got that. That's a good question, is there further comments on that subject?
Aaron Wolf, again, my only other question was, they were, it's currently advertised to subdivide and sell a portion of the lot. Is that going to affect anything moving forward with the fine?
Council Wolf, go ahead.
This is Sean Ryan again with the Department of Planning and Zoning. If the project is not extended, that subdivision could not occur without additional improvements being made to the site. So the subdivision of the property depends on the continued approval of this project.
Thank you, guys.
Other questions or comments?
I had a couple of comments or questions. Council, is a timber fine always going to be attached to a development, to a development plan? Like, why is this one attached to a plan and not just a fine when we gave it?
No, you know, frankly, the ordinance doesn't allow a fine. And this ordinance, we, you know, we have changed the the tree preservation ordinance or created the tree preservation ordinance, and this this tree cutting happened before that ordinance, so it's under, it would fall under the the old timbering ordinance that was in effect. And the old timbering ordinance does not give you the authority to levy a fine. It says the penalty is you wait three years before you get a development. So the plan condition that was attached to this bank was, in lieu of waiting that three years before the next Town Council approval, you're going to agree to pay $13,400. So, you know, to answer your question, no, will not, it would not ordinarily a fine, I could, I could not previously just go levy a fine on somebody, or the town could not for violation of a timbering ordinance, because that really wasn't there. So what this is, says, if you want your special exception use now in 2018, I believe it was, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong. If you want your special exception use now, you're going to agree to pay the $13,400 at the time of construction drawing approval. They just didn't carry it forward, you know, continuously, there was a long delay, there's a long delay there, so that plan condition still just exists and hangs out there.
Okay, thank you. And there's a question, the person who requested this, the letter was sent in February, they no longer are representing the bank, is that what we just learned?
They are still working with the bank, but they did not feel comfortable speaking for the bank this evening.
Okay, so they're still representing the bank, okay.
Correct.
And the bank still wants to move forward?
All indications in the letter that they submitted suggest that they do still want to move forward.
I remember having reservations, although I did approve it of this, of the this construction because of putting all that extra traffic on ARP Street and Raleigh Street, and given all the extra traffic that we see on those streets now, I still have heartburn over this plan.
Other comments?
Counselor, one question. Yes, sorry, Mr. Mayor, one additional question, Dan Barry here, counsel, one question on your explanation. If the extension is granted, and at the end of that six months will be past that three-year time period, so if they don't have construction drawings before the end of that six months and that three years kind of lapses, but then if there's another extension granted after that, does the fine still hold true, or would it fall off after the three years?
No, it would still hold true as long as the special exception permit that was granted is valid and alive and active. So if they were to abandon this plan, this development plan, and the special exception use that went with it or that allows this plan to refer, if they were to abandon it, then you could not, then after three years, and that three years will be up within six months, you would not be able to enact any penalty against them. But because this is a current plan condition of your special exception use, you know, if you continue this for five or 10 years, it's my opinion that that fine would still be collectible. It's just a, it's a condition of the special exception use that was granted originally.
Hey, thanks.
Barry, Dan Barry?
I'm good, Mayor, he answered my question.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Sean Ryan again with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Before the council proceeds to the motion, I just want to make note that there's a typo on the motion. The extension should be through August 28th of 2020, not July 28th.
Please say that again, I can see it on my screen, say it again, please.
There is a typo on the motion, the extension would be through August 28th, 2020, not July 28th, 2020, it's a six-month extension.
Okay. Thank you. Someone want to tackle that motion, please?
Aaron Wolf, I'll do it. Motion to grant the first of an allowable for six-month extensions for 17-DP-16-801 and 17-SEU-06 for United Community Bank to extend the expiration date from February 28th, 2020 to August 28th, 2020, as requested by M. Derwood Stevenson.
Second, let's go to the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Dan Barry.
Aye.
Pete Wilson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Nay.
Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Dr. Wolf.
Aye.
Passes four eyes, one name. Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Other business? I just want to have one thing tonight, and I don't think you've seen this. I'm not selling t-shirts that somebody is. I think Councilmember Kelly knows a little bit about this too, t-shirts, no?
I'm wearing one tonight, the local one.
It's easier for you than me, maybe.
I got the green one on tonight.
This is the gray one. The answer here is, this t-shirt is being produced by Next Gen in Holly Springs to help support our local businesses. The cost is $24, and 60% of that will be going back to these local businesses. There's a link, should I read her this, if you want to know the link, have you got it, Christine? I got it.
If you just go to any of those businesses, Pace Yourself, or Moments in Time, or Sir Walter, if they could get the link.
Yeah, they also can get from our Moments in Time, that's
Yeah.
Quite what it is, www.nextgencustomapparel.com. And it's for the local businesses, it's choose local, Holly Springs, I think it's quite neat, I got this about an hour ago. That's my other business, besides our public safety. Other business, can anybody else? Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate staff working through all of the new processes and all the hard work. And in spite of the virus, I'm seeing a lot of work being done, so I appreciate that, and kudos to them all. I also want to do a shout-out for the local businesses that I know that are trying to work through this. And even in spite of these difficult times, I've seen some wonderful outreach. I had Pace Yourself come, and they bought cards from local businesses, and we were able to give those out as part of the the Wake Mill outreach to folks, so it's a win-win in many ways. And in some ways, the community's really coming together, and it's a great thing to see. So I appreciate all the work. The police that have been around, I know I saw them outside of Target this weekend, making sure that everybody is keeping the six feet social distancing, and but their attitudes have been great, everybody I've seen has been just really working hard. So just thank you, staff, thank you, residents, and we'll get through this.
Here, here. Other comments?
Thank you, Karen. Had a few things I'd like to point out, I'd like to echo the thanks for our staff doing a great job adapting to this new normal as it is. Jeff and Linda did a great job setting up this meeting, we're not only doing this virtually, but we also have new agenda management software we're working with. So there's a lot of new things going on behind the scenes, so great job to all of our administrative staff who's pulling this together. Not to mention our police and fire departments putting new protocols in place to deal with the pandemic. Police officers in a tough situation with the county order being more restrictive than the state, and business owners confused whether or not they can operate or not, and our police are kind of in the middle of that. So kudos to all those guys on the front lines and ladies on the front lines doing some great work with the community, supporting our businesses and our residents as we work through this. Do have one quick anecdote I'd like to throw out there, special shout-out to our code enforcement department. I was talking to a local contractor here in town a week or so ago, and he told me a story about how, you know, code enforcement typically comes out and does inspections for businesses and houses as they're being built and things like that. And he told me, yeah, they had to have a reinspection on something, and the code department actually did that over FaceTime, and the contractor just walked around the house and kind of showed the things that were changed and altered since the last time they did an onsite inspection. But they deemed it was, you know, that they had the ability to do it over FaceTime rather than coming out there. And it was just really a sign of the times and how a department that is so naturally inclined to work with the public face-to-face, working over FaceTime to conduct the same business. So I thought that was a really neat story, and I heard that from a business owner here in town. So great job to Daniel Pope and his staff, you know, really, really understanding what the needs are for them to go out and do onsite inspections versus the opportunity to use technology to do stuff that's maybe a little less impactful or a little bit, you know, on the side of a reinspection where it doesn't require that manual touch. So great job to them. The last thing I'd like to ask for, you know, Randy and maybe Cassie on the communication side, is if we've published the new link for the Envirus Wake County landfill link, I was conducting some essential business today and had to drive down 55 and went past there, and the landfill was pretty stinky once again. So this was my first time using that new link myself, I submitted it this morning. It seemed to work all right, it was much simpler, the dropdowns were a little clunky, but I just wanted to make sure we've done a communications blast on that, and that all of our residents know that there's a new reporting tool out there where that data is being collected now, and just keep reinforcing that maybe for a month or so, so everybody gets that, and we continue to report those malorders when we encounter them.
Appreciate you sharing that. Cassie Hack, I think she is listening in, but she's not on the video side. But we have had some information that's gone out, and we'll make sure to reemphasize that to the residents.
Very good.
Thanks.
Who else?
To have one quick comment, I will try and pile on, but thanks again to everybody who's shifted and adapted to this. And the addition would be, I saw that Economic Development put out some stuff to try and help our small businesses. So that's one more way that I know we can help all these people trying to consolidate effort and different things that are going on. I did have one other item for new business when we get to that.
Anybody else?
I would just like to echo the thanks to the entire staff for rallying together. As somebody who's been revamping a bunch of policies and protocols recently, I know how much work goes into it, and the town staff is a much bigger operation than I'm handling, so thank you. I also, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I'm starting to blame Chief Herring for all this because I've watched a lot of police dramas, and stuff usually goes really wrong a couple of weeks before somebody retires. So I'm just going to put that out there for the public to digest a little bit. But I also wanted to thank the town residents, they've done a really great job adapting to the orders that have come down from Wake County and that our town has supported, and it has made a big difference. The governor's projections that came out yesterday said that if we keep going the way we're going with these current policies, we can probably see a half a million less cases in North Carolina over the course of the outbreak. And that is a huge deal because it means that our hospitals will not be overrun, and that we have a 75% chance of meeting our ICU bed need over the course of the outbreak, so keep doing what you're doing. One change that's come out is, just to make sure everybody's aware, I think they are, because it's been all over social media. One change that's come out is, just to make sure everybody's aware, I think they are, because it's been all over social media, is the CDC recommendation that everybody should be wearing a cloth mask of some sort when they're out and about. It is not a substitute for the six foot separation and social distancing policies, but it is an addition to it. And as the CDC has also said, there is a up to 50% chance that those who are infected are asymptomatic. So these, these masks are not to prevent you from catching the virus, they're to prevent you from potentially spreading the virus to other folks. So my wife is not a seamstress, but she has taught herself to sew and has made myself and my kids masks. And if she can do it, we can all do it. And there are plenty of patterns available online, all you have to do is look. So everybody, please do that and keep up the good work.
So Wolf, I found a, in fact, I cut up some old campaign t-shirts and gave them to the volunteers the last couple of nights. I have, and that's all you need are scissors and you can make masks that way. And I saw another one that you can take sockets and make a mask out of that, just with a pair of scissors. So lots of, you don't even have to sew to keep other people safe.
Thank you. Good words. Anybody else? Senior, I'm number 11, manager of the board. Randy Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor, again, Randy Harrington, town manager. Mayor, I've got five items I want to update you and the council on. The the first one is related to the COVID-19 and what the town is doing. And I want to thank the council members and the mayor for your leadership on this effort and obviously very unprecedented times and everybody's working as hard as they can to to make the best of the situation and and keep our community safe. So I want to thank you for for your leadership. The, I also want to thank the community for what the community is doing to help stop the spread of the virus and the social distancing. Many sacrifices are being made all across families and businesses. We certainly recognize that and want to recognize those efforts by those individuals and those businesses to really do their part to help spread the or stop the spread. So thank you for that. The, a couple of other just notes here related to the town's response. We have, we've added a lot of information on our website and residents can go to our homepage. And then there's a big banner right up front that you can click on and get additional information about the town's response as well as a lot of really useful links to other county, state, national sources to to gain information about the latest on the COVID-19. And in particular, I think one of the council members, might have been Councilmember McGrath, made this comment about the the business components and there's a wealth of information for small businesses, particularly locals. Well, local and small businesses to get resources and who to reach and who to contact for assistance and help and help answering some of your questions. So I want to refer and encourage folks to to visit our website. If folks don't have internet access, you, in internet access, you can also call the town and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Our main line to the town is 919-552-6221. And one of our staff members will be happy to to answer any questions. I also want to note that the the public works and all of our town operations continue to work as I say, I almost said normal, but that's probably not quite the right word. But they continue to operate in terms of serving our community. And certainly want to recognize all of our employees who are working from home, those who are required to come in and and work, particularly those around our public safety area, police, fire. And then also our public work crews who are out there and many of our parks maintenance staff who are continuing to maintain our parks and greenways. So I want to recognize those individuals and thank you for for that. One thing just to keep in mind, we know that a lot of residents are at home and doing a lot of yard work and trimming trees and whatnot. And just a reminder that when you put your your yard waste to the curb, if you just make sure to separate those grass clippings from some of the larger clippings, and that'll help our crews move through the neighborhoods quickly and safely. And we have a little bit extra amount of yard waste that's out there right at this particular time of the year with more folks being home. Obviously, the kind of the key start of the growing season. So the community's help on that front would be greatly appreciated, thank you for that. The one other thing that I that I will note to you that last week I communicated to you that we have done some budget reduction exercises here at the town. We, obviously, there will be a reduction in sales tax that we anticipate in our parks and recreation area as well, some reductions. And the target that we had was 1.1 million. I'm really proud of our organization. Everybody has come together and we have set aside that target of 1.1 million dollars here for this current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, to help ensure that our budget stays in balance and that that we manage our resources adequately and be good stewards of public's money. The, let's see, I think that might be it on the COVID side. Let's see, my notes. Yeah, so let me transfer or transition to a couple of other additional items. The second, tomorrow from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Duke Energy will be conducting a siren test associated with the Sharon Harris Nuclear Power Plant. This is just a regular testing of their system, but residents may hear some loud audible noises between that time and it's perfectly normal, but it is their annual test. And just want to make you and the the community aware of that for tomorrow. One other thing, another, a third topic, I want to, I'm really proud of our community on our census results so far. Of all Wake County towns and cities, our residents in in Holly Springs are leading with the highest percentage of residents who have completed the the census survey. And right now, I think this is as of this morning, 62.9, so really 63% of our residents have completed their their census survey. The next closest community is Cary at 57.2%. And I'll also note that the Wake County average is 50.9%. North Carolina in general is 40, about 42%. And in the United States, 45%. So again, a really a big thank you to our residents. We still have more that that we would encourage you to take that, the census survey. And I help make sure that everybody is counted here in Holly Springs. But certainly want to recognize Gina Clapp for her efforts along with Cassie Hack and our communications team and the other team members in planning, who've just done a really remarkable job helping to get the word out over the past year. I think that's really helped us so that when folks, residents in our community got their notification letters, they were ready and knew that the 2020 census was coming. So thank you on that on that front. Two other quick items, one, the, just a heads up for the mayor and council as well as the community. As you recall, we had suspended or paused our youth athletic programs. And those have been suspended or paused until April 12th. We do have some new information that we'll be releasing tomorrow on the status of the remainder of the season. We're still working through a couple of final details on that, but just want the community to be aware and be on the lookout tomorrow for some additional information from the town that will share where we will position ourselves for the remainder of the spring youth athletic season. And then finally, want to echo, one of the council members made a comment, might have been the council member, Mayor Protem Berry. Really, I want to give kudos to Linda and her team on the development of a new agenda process. And so hit two big stones here tonight with a new agenda development process as well as the online format. Again, I want to thank Jeff Wilson for his work and a big team, Cassie Hack, John Chafano, Linda McKinney, who've done a really great job in terms of helping prepare us for tonight. So thank you on that front, kind of a long manager's report, but thank you for letting me share those items, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to leave on one one quick positive note. I had a call last week from a senior lady who, when she found out I was even more senior, we became friends. And she was very lonely, she'd been injured, she was recuperating at home by herself. And she was lonesome and had things that she had done and didn't know to call. She is now on the police watch report, which means they check by a phone almost daily. And Officer Clark, Jamie Clark, the division, and I can't tell you how appreciative she was, which would bring true of all the other people who are on that same program. It brought tears to her eyes and mine too. So I'll leave you on that note and at this point in time, counselor, close session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Development Director and Town Manager would like to consult with the town council on two possible economic development projects, one in the Business Park and one at Main Street and Ralph Stevens Road. So it asks that you would, and and no action will be taken tonight, any. It's just to get, give direction to staff on entering into agreements, possible agreements, and if any of these agreements were entered into, they would be brought back to you in open session. So this is just a preliminary discussion. So pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318 that 11A4 to discuss an economic, two economic development incentive approaches with the with the council.
They're moved, counselor.
Must have been made several favor. Let's go to the roll call, Carnegie. Dan Barrett, I think I heard you, correct?
I made the motion, I think you still need a second.
Absolutely, second.
This is Pete, second.
Thank you, must have made several say, all favor, Dan Barrett?
Aye.
Pete Nelson?
Aye.
Christine Kelly? Christine Kelly? You muted, I think. I read your lips, she said.
Aye.
And Dr. Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
We made several favor, say aye, opposed, no, roll call, we are in close session. Thank you all.